I'd like to call the meeting of November 12th of the Tacoma School Board of Directors to order. Would you please stand for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My computer's not behaving tonight. Sorry about that. For some reason, my computer isn't opening.
I'll help you out. We are to roll call.
Roll call, please.
Director Miller.
Here.
Director Ushka.
Here.
Director Viall.
Here. All right, tonight, we're going to do something a little bit different. Two of our board members, as you can see, aren't here, and one of them is required present, it needs to be somewhere else. This normally doesn't happen. So, what I'm going to do is I am going to make a motion to, I move to amend the agenda to have all matters that require action by the board completed first to ensure a quorum is present as needed, which will result in the agenda being as followed for the rest of the meeting. First would be approval of the consent agenda, then curriculum and instruction matters, business matters, other business, recognition of staff, students, and community, members of the public wishing to address the board, superintendents' report, report to the board, board comments, reports, announcement of future board meetings, and adjournment. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Donays, motion is adopted three zero. So, we will begin with a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and are there any questions or comments of the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is adopted three oh. Curriculum and instruction matters, do we have any? We've got it dropped down here, I'm sorry, we're all kind of discombobulated.
I'll provide an assist. Approval of the Carl D. Perkins Grant for the 2015-2016 school year?
May I have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Somebody was going to read it.
Tony, are you going to do that? Sorry, I'm sorry, we messed everybody up. We're going to, innovation requires flexibility, therefore, we're being flexible. You're not on, okay.
On behalf of Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Learning and Support, the Deputy Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors approve submission of the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Grant application in the amount of $262,153 to the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Thank you. Now.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and is there any questions or discussions?
So, this is an annual grant, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries three oh. Let me see, business matters. Who's going to do that?
Josh.
Joshua.
12.1 is approval of the 2015-16 Agreement between the Tacoma School District Number 10 and Safe Streets Campaign. The Deputy Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors approve the agreement between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Safe Streets Campaign for the period of September 1, 2015, through August 30, 2016.
That's approved.
Second. I moved to second.
I do have to state for the record, even though she's not here, Director Winskill serves as a board member for Safe Streets, and therefore, had she been here tonight, she would have had to announce her conflict of interest and recuse herself, but for the purposes of maintaining appropriate minutes, Director Winskill's conflict of interest is noted.
Thank you.
I think she felt it was easier just to leave town.
Well, that's what she said. If I have to go after this, I think I'll just leave town. We have a motion to adopt.
I think we did.
Did we? Okay. Did I hear a motion to?
It's been, uh, moved in second.
Bucket house, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is adopted three oh. I guess we have no other?
We're back to, we are to the matter that you wanted to postpone to a date certain.
All right, other businesses, legislative, 13.1, legislative priorities. This is a draft of our legislative priorities, and normally, we would adopt it tonight, but given the fact that two of our board members are absent, I am going to make a motion to move this item to a date certain, that date certain being the school board meeting of November 23rd. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is adopted. Okay, I think.
Now, we get to go back to public recognition.
Now, we will go back to public comment and recognition. I can find it here. All right.
Good evening, Vice President Viall and members of the board. I'm Kathryn McCarthy from the Public Information Office. Tonight, we have the rare and distinguished honor to celebrate. Each year, the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction scours the state for the best of the best teachers. And at a recent ceremony in Seattle, Superintendent Randy Dorn accounted that the 2016 Washington State Teacher of the Year was Mr. Nathan Gibbs Bowling of Weekan High School. Nate is now under consideration as a National Teacher of the Year. You may also recall that in 2014, Nate was named a National Milken Educator Award winner. Who better to tell about what makes Nate Bowling such a special teacher and present him with you, present him to you for recognition than the principal of Lincoln High School, Mr. Patrick Irwin?
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, my voice is a little raspy. I met Nate Bowling nine years ago. Was at a social function with teachers, and I talked with him for about 15 seconds, and then I said to him, I said, "When are you coming to Lincoln High School?" He was teaching at Meeker at the time, and he kind of stammered, and he said, "I feel I should owe them at least two years." And I said, "Okay, come see me after two years." So, we met, I hired him, and it's been a treat ever since. I was a good teacher, I was in charge of social studies for the school district after my fourth year. I'm nothing compared to what this man does in the classroom. He is a phenomenon, and it's not just that he's talented, he works hard, he has high expectations of his kids. And he has a saying that I love, where he says, "My kids may not come to me as AP, but they leave as AP students." So, when we talk about academic acceleration, when we talk about enhanced rigor, when we talk about improving our graduation rate, if we could clone Nate Bowling, we'd be 100% on all fronts. So, it's my pleasure at this time to introduce the Teacher of the Year for the state of Washington, and if I were a gambling man, I would put money on him for the National Teacher of the Year, Mr. Nathan Gibbs Bowling.
I always hate when Pat introduces me, because he does that to me every time. I'm a Tacoma kid, born and bred Stanley, Jason Lee, Foss, and the work that I do in Tacoma is inspired by just my dedication to the community, and I appreciate the recognition from you all. I often say to people that teaching, particularly in a high-poverty high school, is a life-and-death matter, and I've been reminded of that by events this week. And so, as I'm honored about this award and this occasion, I'm also mindful of how important the work we're doing is, and just thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Call him up. Nathan, would you please come up? Hey, thank you, you know the drill. It's always an honor to have one of our homegrown, in my case, I think Mr. Bowling hung out when he was at Foss a few times in my kitchen with my boys, so it's awesome to be up here to see him where he is now in his career. All right, we have another recognitions. McCarthy, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Viall and members of the board. Your commitment in policy and resources to innovation, to innovative schools and programs has empowered our schools to think about how they can carve out their own unique niche to serve students. MacArthur Elementary is a perfect example. MacArthur launched its International Baccalaureate IB candidacy during the 2011-2012 school year. Scott Rich, principal of MacArthur at the time, and Michael Mira, executive director of the Tacoma Housing Authority, initiated the idea to have MacArthur become an IB world school. Tacoma already had a 20-plus year history with the rigorous IB program at Foss High School, and had just initiated a middle-years program, a middle-years IB program at Gia Jerome. By adding the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program at MacArthur, parents who want their children to be challenged from kindergarten through high school now have a school-to-school-to-school track to follow. Earning accreditation from the international organization that oversees IB schools is a grueling and rigorous process. Under former Principal Rich, who cannot be here tonight, and now co-principals Wayne Greer and Janet Gates-Cortez, the MacArthur staff and team has earned its accreditation. So, please join me in welcoming MacArthur's leadership team and distinguished staff members.
Thank you. First of all, the acquisition of the International Baccalaureate recognition for MacArthur is primarily because of the hard work of the teachers. Janet and I have been conduit to make that happen, providing resources, making sure that everyone is trained, so that we can deliver a model of instruction where kids can thrive no matter where they come from, no matter what they look like, no matter all the other tags that are put on our students and the community that we serve. So, it has been a pleasure to be a part of that hard work. We had a, our IB coordinator, at the time, Daniel Herforth, was a big part of that work, training our staff, really making sure that we're doing the right things the right way. Also, with Janet Gates-Cortez joining on board, we've just been really pressing, and we were able to get authorized on our first visit out, which is very rare for schools being identified. So, now, it is really a pleasure to be recognized among schools around the world as an International Baccalaureate school.
We also wanted to recognize that this work is not only from the teachers and from the IB coordinator at the time, we also have a lot of community partners that were involved in supporting MacArthur becoming an IB world school. That included Michael Mira, who was mentioned earlier. He wanted me to read a letter, since he couldn't be present tonight, but instead, I have copies for all of you, so that that can be shared. He was instrumental in terms of having that vision of what MacArthur could be, and has supported that in the Tacoma Housing Authority partnerships. We have also had a partnership with our MacArthur Scholars, which is through a 21st Century Grant. They run our after-school program and are fully integrated in terms of the IB world standards, as well as the learner profile supports that you will see in the MacArthur drawings that are posted in the back. Our pillars in the cafeteria all support the 10 attributes that we are supporting and having students learn, so that's been a partnership all around. And lastly, we have our Kiwanis Club, who supports our terrific kid assemblies, and we give IB tickets to students who are demonstrating those IB learner traits. With that comes recognition on a monthly basis and celebrations that help them in terms of the global citizenship traits that we expect in the rigorous learning that they have. And lastly, we wanted to thank Superintendent Santorino, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, Assistant Superintendent Tony Pace, for your support of the IB work. We know that it's a big commitment from the district, and to the school board for also recognizing us. And a special thanks to Director Karen Viall, because she was on our site visit during our two-day arduous visit from the IB organization, and I think it's because of all that support that we were able to pass the first go-round. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to come up? Great, thank you.
There's a third one, is that not?
I thought we have a third one, or we're?
Boys and Girls Club?
Boys and Girls Club, or is that something we're doing at another time?
I think we're going to.
Based on the absence.
Yeah, I guess we're doing that at another time.
But I recommend that we also move to postpone that item to a date to be determined.
All right, I will move that we postpone Item 5 to recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Ward for August 2015 to the Boys and Girls Clubs of South Puget Sound, to a date certain, that date being November 23rd.
I would go with the date to be.
Just a date determined, all right. I shall amend my, to a date to be determined.
I have a second.
Thank you. It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, passes, aye, three oh. All right, moving now to members of the public wishing to, can we find where I have to read your, address the board. The Tacoma Public School Board of Directors encourages public participation, and your input is greatly appreciated. If you would like to address the board, we ask you to follow these steps. Please complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Card submitted after public comment is ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak in the microphone. You will have three minutes to share your comments and concerns, and you'll see a clock up there with three minutes, and when it gets to one minute, you will get one ding, and then when it gets to zero, you will get another ding, and that's when we would please ask you to conclude your comments. And as always, we would ask that comments that you make to us, they be made in a respectful and civil manner. Thank you. Superintendent Santorino?
Yes, we have one speaker, Courtney Goodez. And Courtney, I just had to acknowledge that she is speaking regarding Blueberry Park area property, and she's againstish.
She's away?
Thank you. Again, Courtney Goodez, and I do live in the Blueberry Park area. First, I wanted to thank you for your cleanup in the recent weeks of that property that you own there. You guys did a pretty darn good job, and the neighbors, and I have to say, we really appreciate that. I do want to make sure that you're aware that when my husband and I went through there yesterday, there was still some garbage along the path, we saw some condoms and a couple needles, but it looks very good. The homeless encampments are gone. We do want to make sure that you're considering when in March and July that you're going to do another cleanup, maybe set a date for that. It's about every four months, you're going to be back to square one. So, the other reason I'm talking is for a long-term solution. I want to implore you and sort of my neighbors that we need one. Some options that we would like you to consider, obviously, if you're thinking about building, we'd like to see some part of the site activated before 2017. If you choose not to build at this time, obviously, an option would be, the city and Metro Parks are considering, they would love to have the property to activate themselves. If neither of those sounds good to you, we really need the property to be patrolled by bike security. We'd love to see bike security there seven to 10 days a week, I mean, sorry, seven to 10 times a week, during different times of the day and night. We've had rapes there, there have been shots, we've had homeless encampments that almost have set fire to our neighbors. Another neighbor saw a couple naked people there once, a few weeks ago, that wasn't fun. Also, I know that Safe Streets and you have a partnership, a $50,000 contract that you're going to be working with students on, and I think that first, with the Whole Child Initiative for that Safe Streets contract, that definitely, please include that a part of a positive school climate is a safe route to school, and the kids of Larchmont, for example, have to walk past that. Finally, your Safe Streets group will be having a youth-leading change program at every one of your high schools. I would really encourage that you have community group time with the high schools that would be working on our neighborhoods. None of the high schools are in our neighborhood, all of them are in other parts of the city, but a lot of our students go to those high schools, and so, it should be a part of the community program to work with our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and coming down here. Is there anyone else?
That's all.
Okay, that concludes our public comment time. Moving on, superintendent's report. This is Santorino, please.
So, it's timely. Steve Merakami is going to give us the update on our work at the Blueberry Park property.
Thank you. Vice President Viall, members of the board.
One member.
Well.
Tonight, your special.
I'm glad I have your focused attention.
Well, I wouldn't go that far.
I have some photos to present, so if we can get those pulled up. At the end of October, we did do a pretty extensive cleanup of Blueberry Park with our partner, Northwest Abeyment. They came in with a 40-yard dumpster, and over the course of two days, cleaned out all the encampments, all the trash, all the debris. And looking at the next slide, those were where the encampments were, and so, those areas have been restored to their natural state. I would add that on our patrol this week, we have maintenance and operations along with our school patrol cruising the site. We did remove one, we escorted one person off the property, it was setting up, and you established a little home base. But the site was looking pretty clean, there was some trash picked up on Tuesday, and so, that's part of our routine maintenance now, that we're walking the site. There is, I would like to invite the community to a community discussion on Tuesday, November 17th, at the Grace Baptist Missionary Church at 6 o'clock. And so, that is a meeting that we're holding with Metro Parks, our partners in this endeavor. Pierce County will be represented, City of Tacoma will be represented, and it'll be a conversation around how to activate, what's a sustainable vision for the park.
Will that be on our website, Steve?
We are, yeah. So, we've done a school insider taping, and the Public Information Office has been sending it out through our social media channels.
Okay, great. Mr. Miller, any questions?
You know, the city has taken on the encampments, so I really appreciate the school district working with them. I was talking to Colin this past week, and we talked about the Blueberry Park, and I told him the district's very committed to making sure that what needs to be done is done. So, when you talk about how, I don't know if I caught how often that area is patrolled and the cleanup is done, did I miss that somewhere?
So, right now, it's on an as-needed basis and weekly. So, it's, they've been going out whenever there's a call, and we do get calls, and then on a weekly basis, random, just both school patrol and maintenance operations.
Okay, so, when there are school patrols out there in that area?
Yes.
They'll swing by and see what's going on?
Yes.
Okay, great, yeah. I like it.
Yeah, and everybody recognizes, you know, that this is a first phase, that we cleaned up the encampment, and now, we're trying to figure out how to activate it, and working with the community. The City of Tacoma's been phenomenal to partner with. Metro Parks has some good insight into what they've done and experienced at the similar parks throughout Tacoma, and so, we're going to try and tap into their knowledge, and then listen to the community to see how they'd like to see the property activated.
Good. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
I'd like to reiterate what Director Miller said, we are committed to making sure that that property is maintained. I had the privilege many years ago to work with Charlotte Valbert, who was the guiding force behind that, and I'm sure that if I don't take care of that, my house might get a lightning bolt coming down from up above, so I, we are committed. It's a great asset to our community, and it's something that we need to do our due diligence on. Thank you very much, and thank the staff for their hard work. All right, Mrs. Santorino has two more things.
Two more things on the superintendent's report. One, I just wanted to congratulate Jennifer Troffler, who's here with her team. Last week, I was in Minneapolis, Minnesota. The Urban Collaborative, which was the group that did our review for special ed, had a conference in Minneapolis last week, and I haven't been back to that conference for probably about eight years, and I was amazed, number one, at its growth, and number two, at the issues that it's taken on. And the other thing that was very clear is that the Washington delegation has really had a big impact on the work around the nation. And it was interesting that, you know, they get all of their members by word of mouth, and the largest contingent of districts is from Washington State, and that is a direct reflection of Jennifer's work, and they really were, looked to, everybody was asking Jennifer to stand and comment on things, so she's quite famous out there in the Urban Collaborative, and so, I am so proud of the work that they've done. There's so many different ways to take a review, you can resent it, or you can regret it, and you can drag your feet, or you can get out there and just really work to improve it, and then the next step above that is to have an influence on people throughout the country. And the Urban Collaborative, I think we were their third review. They did, I asked them to do one in Seattle, that's a whole nother story. And then I asked them to.
We saw what they did with theirs.
Then we asked them to do one in Tacoma, and since then, they've done several reviews, and that's based on the feedback and things that Jennifer has given. So, there is an incredible example of the work of one team really having an influence across the country. So, Jennifer, congratulations, they did a report on inclusion that was incredible. Congratulations to the Public Information Office, because we had three videos, they used three videos from our PI department in their presentation, and I was telling Danville Powell that somebody came up to me afterwards, gave me this card, which is not unusual, people always give me their cards, but he said, "Ma'am, we want to license those videos." And so, yeah, they wanted to pay us for the license to buy the videos and sell them around the world. And I said, "Well, talk to Danville Powell." So, I don't think so. So, anyway, I think that's great. The other thing.
So, I just want to follow up real quickly on that, Carla, because you brought up something that's very important. When the review was done, and the board was presented with the action items, the question was, could it be done? And there was a lot of hesitation, I think, on the board's part at that time, because it was a huge, huge undertaking. And Jennifer, I got to say, you did it. You knocked it out of the ballpark, because having our regular reports, seeing the differences, all those kinds of things, you made a believer out of me. And I'll tell you, yeah, I'm just glad we did the review, and I'm just really proud of how it has come through, so, thank you, Jennifer. And thank your team, also, amazing.
Right, and I would just want to echo that, too. I know it was my first few months on the board, and we went ahead and did this, and I felt that we had to do it, but you often wonder how well it's going to be received and what's going to happen, and the way that you and your staff have brought the parents into the picture, we don't hear anybody concerned about now, and all the positive things with the inclusion and the student voice that we're hearing. Kudos to you and to the staff, and I had a parent the other day who has a son that attends Foss, and she said, "You know, this is the first time that Alec has ever felt that he was a part of the school that he's gone to," and I contribute that to the work that you and your staff are doing. Bottom line, that's what it's all about. So, again, as Director Miller said, you know, we sit up here, we get to hear the good stuff and reap the benefits, but we know who does the hard work. Thank you.
I think it's important, I know Jennifer would say the same thing if she was up here, we're not finished. So, we know that we have several, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and I think one of the things that is laudable about their report is, I thought it was funny, actually, but they had all 18 of the review areas up on the slide, and so, it just showed that, you know, they were committed to getting it all done, and a very accurate reflection of what we started, you know, what we're working on, and what we still need a lot to do. So, it was a real, it was a real accurate report. The second thing I just wanted to talk about is, this morning, I went to, I haven't been to, I just haven't had an opportunity, or haven't taken an opportunity, but this morning was at the principal's professional development, and I just want to say thank you to Marie, and to Rita, and to Krista, and all of those, you know, individuals that have really worked, and a thank you to our elementary principals that are working. The conversation that I heard this morning about the data, thank you, Finnie, for that, and about the high-yield strategies, and about the specific details that they're taking to, you know, to attack that achievement gap. I have to say, Sally, I'm thinking, crap, I wish Sally was here. She would have heard all of this stuff, you know, that they're doing, because it's specific to our children, and to make sure that we, you know, are working toward raising the achievement gap, and the strategies were great, and the conversation was rich, and you could just really tell the difference, and so, I really appreciate that. The other thing is, it's important to note, is that we know we've had some incredible tragedies happen in Tacoma over the last couple of weeks, and again, I want to just give credit to our response team. They are incredible folks, and what I love is that you just get out of their way. They know how to get out there and support schools and support students, and they find all the tentacles of, you know, where they need to go to get anybody who's affected, so thank you so much to our crisis team, they do an incredible job.
Thank you, Ms. Santorino. Before we move on, I wanted to address that at some point. Those three young people were all our kids at one time or another, one of them in particular, mine, Elijah Crawford, and I taught for five years, that we think about how we can better engage with our kids in our community, so that... so that these kind of things don't continue to occur. Been around this community, I guess, too long to see those and it's time for it to stop. And I would ask all of us, it's going to take all of us. It did a number of years ago and it will again, all different generations. And I think one of the things that we try to do here in the district now is to know, is to get kids up with mentors. And I think that, to me, is critical because one of the things I learned during my time, also as a parent and also out in working on the east side, was that every child needs to know someone cares about them and that they don't feel like they walk journeys alone and they have somebody that they can talk to and somebody that takes an interest in them. And I would ask that we, as a community, recommit ourselves to not just talking, but doing. It doesn't take that much time. And to being engaged with our kids and helping in any way possible that we can. We have a lot of kids in this community. We know our kids live in poverty and we know what that brings with us. And if there's things that we can do as a community, I know Director Miller works in housing, I've worked in nonprofits. It's a never-ending journey, but I think these things that happen and when three of our young people are struck down before they've even had an opportunity to contribute to this, to this community that perhaps we can bring ourselves to a point where, again, Tacoma comes together as it has in the past and works to solve our problems and put our kids at the center. We do this every day in the district. We, as a community, need to do that again because that truly is our future. And I would ask for, if we could all just have just a little moment of silence for these three families that have been affected by this because they are our families too. So if we could just do that for about 10 seconds, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Report to the board.
No, we should just reschedule.
Would you like to reschedule report to the board for the rest of the board to be here?
Probably would be good.
That's what I was thinking too.
I'd say probably in December.
When you're gone, yeah. Before you, before we do that and move on, there is someone in the audience that I would like to acknowledge. And that is our new school board member-elect, Andrea Cobb, who is here. Andrea, you can stand up. And you might want to ask her permission before you shove that out because she has to be here.
I don't think she's on the board yet. So, no, whenever you want to reschedule.
How about, what's the 23rd look like?
Getting packed.
I don't know, but we'll look at it. We can do that.
We can do it. We'll look, we'll look at it. Marie, I'm sorry, is that going to create issues for you to set this off? No? You're good? Okay, good answer. Okay, all right, I will make a motion. I can't move, we'll just...
Well, you can move. You can't do anything, so you can't take it.
We're just not going to do it.
Well, just moving on, we're not prepared to do this, so we'll do this at another time. Is that all right?
That works.
That works, all right.
I think it's a good time. I didn't notice, Dr. Garcia noticed. We have our two student board members here.
Where are they?
Come on up. Come on up. You got to sit in the front.
Glad you got to be up here. Let's go. I didn't know that. You should have been here. My goodness.
Now you know for next time.
You get the luxury of filling the space with a 30-minute speech about your life.
So you just want to introduce yourself and tell us what school you come from and your favorite things you love to do, okay?
My name is Florlie Bernarte and I go to Mount Tahoma and I'm a senior. And my favorite thing is to be involved in my school because like I'm involved with ASB and all these sports programs and leadership programs and that's like my passion. I like to, you know, like be involved and help the school and benefit in any way I can.
And you've been here before. We're glad to have you back and thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, hi, my name is Chelsea Olson. I'm a junior at Stadium High School. And my favorite thing to do is go to ASB, my class, because I love just being part of the community and I love just giving back to my students.
Great, so you will be sitting up here next meeting, right? We didn't even realize you were here. We would have had you up here tonight. All right, great, welcome and we look forward to hearing from you on issues and I know that you had fun last year. Okay, great, thank you. Great, board comments, reports. None. I have none either. Announcement of future board meetings. November 20th, 2015, we will be presenting at Wasden Annual Conference, which is the Washington State School Board Directors Association on our innovative, our innovative processes that we do here in the district. Our next regular meeting will be November 23rd at 6 o'clock here, Monday, November 23rd. Note the date, because of Thanksgiving, we traditionally hold that meeting on Monday. So that will be Monday, November 23rd. And then, the next meeting, the last meeting of the year will be December 10th, 2015, and that will be here at 6 o'clock. So with that, I think, nope, what do we have now? All right, now can I adjourn the meeting?
Well, one more thing. We do want you to know that we will have a reception on Monday, 23rd. I think it's going to start, where are we going to start? 45 minutes early for the...
5:30.
5:30 for a reception for Kurt Miller, so make sure you come.
Do I have to be there?
You have to be there. You have to be here.
I don't know, that's more for us than what if you don't come.
You have to be here, so come and acknowledge him. 12 years on the board, we're excited to thank him for your service, so. Monday, the 23rd, 5:30.
5:30. Thank you, Superintendent Santorno. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.